We're in the intro. Stand by for countdown.
You ready?
Thank you for Googling that. Thirty seconds. Twenty. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022 Board of County Commission meeting. I'm Nicole Gibbs, Community Relations Specialist. Daylight saving times, daylight saving times ends this Sunday, and Sedgwick County Fire District One wants to remind everyone to take this opportunity to change the batteries in your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. It's always good practice to test these devices monthly. Veterans Day is a very important day in our country, and Sedgwick County will be honoring it in multiple ways. The county commissioners, treasurer, register of deeds, and first responders will be participating in the Veterans Day parade on Saturday, November 5th. The parade starts at 11:00. It will start at Central and Main and end on Waterman at the Waterwalk. The historic courthouse will be lit up in green, starting November 7th through November 13th, to show our support for nation's veterans as part of the National Association of Counties' Operation Green Light. As a reminder, Sedgwick County offices will be closed on Friday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Emergency services are available by calling and texting 911. The 2022 general election is nearly here. Early in-person satellite locations opened yesterday and will be open through Saturday. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th, and we encourage everyone to know your options to vote. Remember, the busiest times to vote on Election Day typically fall when the polls open, over lunch, and right after the workday. We encourage everyone to verify their assigned polling location to know where you can vote on Election Day. You can do this by visiting sedgwickcounty.org/elections. Last but very not least, fentanyl has been making its way into the news and unfortunately is in our community. Sheriff Easter and local partners Wichita Police Department, the Wichita Crime Commission, Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, Substance Abuse Center of Kansas, YEP, and County Communications recently gave a presentation to the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce on this severe, on the severe dangers of fentanyl. This drug can be found in any counterfeit pill and is extremely dangerous. The smallest quantity of fentanyl is potentially lethal. Sedgwick County has made videos for parents and adults to better understand this drug and its effects. If you'd like to view those, you can see those on the Sedgwick County YouTube page. If you would like to see the presentation made to the chamber, you can find that on the chamber's YouTube page. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda. You will have five proclamations, a tornado after action report from emergency management, an island annexation request, a proposed budget transfer, the quarterly financial report, a report of the board in bids of contracts, and a Fire District One meeting. With that, Chairman, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Nicole. I appreciate it, and I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience today. I know we have five proclamations today, so that's the main reason we have so many people in the audience at this time, but thanks for joining us. A couple of things that I want to mention before we start the meeting is this, I am hoping, is the last time that we will meet in this room. We're going to meet over at the lower level of the Ruffin Building, starting two weeks from today, and so this is kind of a fond farewell to this room. You don't have to go through security in order to get into the Ruffin Building, so that's one plus for all of those that went through security today, and saw how difficult it is getting into the building, but that's because we have the courts here. But this is a part of a progression of moves here. Hopefully, in another couple of years, we'll have another building that we can move into permanently, but for now, starting at the very next meeting, two weeks from today, we'll be over at the Ruffin Building. Also, I appreciate Nicole mentioning that November 5th is the parade. For those that are either in the parade or those that are observing the parade, I want to remind everyone that at the end of the parade, down at Waterwalk, we do have a ceremony at the end of the parade to recognize all of our veterans, so please take a trek down the street to Waterwalk and join us for the ceremonies. There's kind of a show and shine car show that'll be available and give a chance that you can personally meet some of the veterans. The theme is the Women Veterans, and that's an important part of our military today and in the past, so I recommend everyone coming to the parade. November 5th starts right out front of the courthouse here, goes down to Waterwalk. Also, another event that's going to be happening here in the near future is on November the 10th, JROTC cadets are going to put on a formal military parade for all of, to recognize our veterans. And they do this each year over a century, too. If you have not had an opportunity to view a formal military parade, it's very impressive, 2,500, 2,600, I'm not quite sure how many there are in JROTC today, but a lot of cadets are going to do a complete formal military parade, so I look forward to that. I want to thank our facilities group here in Sedgwick County for putting the green light on over at the old courthouse. If those of you remember here just a few months ago, they lit up the courthouse red, white, and blue. Now they're going to light up the courthouse green and honor all of our veterans. And finally, again, a reminder to vote. During the primary, we had long lines. We do have a number of facilities that are open currently, so from 10 o'clock this morning, you can go over and vote at any of those locations, and that will help the lines on November the 8th. So a lot of things that are happening here in the very near future. Again, welcome, everyone that's joining us today. At this time, I'd like to call a meeting to order for Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, you all received one public agenda item last night by email, and what it was, was a request for a proclamation from the Chamber of Commerce, but it arrived too late for us to be able to put it on the October the 19th agenda. I just want to let everyone know how much we appreciate what the Chamber of Commerce does here in this county. What they do for our businesses and for the community is invaluable. I am very sorry that we missed the opportunity to present that proclamation to them on October the 19th, but I just wanted to make sure that we formally recognized the impact that the Chamber of Commerce has on this community and thanked them very much. With that, I move that we receive and file the public comments. We have a motion in a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we do not have anyone signed up to speak today during public comments. So Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of October 5th, 2022.
Commissioners, everyone sent an opportunity to review the minutes from October the 5th. Move to approve. We have a motion in a second and a discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, proclamation recognizing the city of Derby as a Purple Heart City.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Howell to read this, since Derby is in his district.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's an honor to read this this morning. The proclamation says, whereas Sedgwick County and the city of Derby have a long history of supporting military personnel, veterans, and families of those who have served their country through the armed services, and whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster in an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas the city of Derby appreciates the sacrifices of Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedom and believe it is important to acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. And whereas the city of Derby staff worked through the Military Order of the Purple Heart 558 and the American Legion Family Post 408 to create a plan for establishing Derby as a Purple Heart City and express Derby's commitment to Purple Heart veterans. And whereas Derby Mayor Randy White proclaimed the city of Derby as a Purple Heart City during the 24th of May City Council meeting and on Veterans Day, the city will unveil signage to visibly establish Derby's location as a part of the Purple Heart Trail of roads, highways, bridges, and other dedicated monuments. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman David Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby commend the city of Derby for its designation as a Purple Heart City and recognize its commitment to showing appreciation for the sacrifices of Purple Heart recipients. Mr. Chairman, I have some comments after we adopt this, but I make a motion, we adopt this proclamation.
Thank you. I'd second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. To receive today's proclamation, I'd like to recognize Mayor of the city of Derby, Randy White, and I'd like to also call up, if it's okay, City Manager of the city of Derby, Kyle Magnus, and Steve Tackett, the commander of American Family Post 408, Steve Tackett, and the son, I didn't do this wrong, and Mike Sainden, the commander of the SAL. I think I got that right. Anyway, please come on up and receive the proclamation, and you're welcome to make some comments, and I have a few comments of my own. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mayor. Thank you for being here.
Well, Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for having us. This is a big deal to us. Appreciate your time. Jim, thanks for, thanks for doing all that. I will tell you the quick story. One of our House Representatives, Blake Carpenter, recently got a job with the Kansas Air National Guard, and he was driving down to Texas for training several times, and he noticed all these Purple Heart signs. And he says, well, why doesn't Derby have one of those? So he got with Mike and our American Legion Post that does a great job for us, and we started the process. We will actually be the seventh city in the state of Kansas to receive this. Most of them are in the Kansas City area, so we're real honored to kind of lead the charge down here in the southern part of the state. But it's a, something pretty special. This, this Purple Heart was actually invented by George Washington. It's one of the oldest medals that is currently used. And basically, you've already said it, it recognized people that were not only injured, but also lost their lives serving our country, and this is a special, special opportunity for us. As we go through this process on Veterans Day, we're going to have a special presentation when we unveil the first sign over by our Warren River View Park, which is, have you ever been to Derby? When you leave town across the river, we have built a park right there, and so we're going to have a sign right there, and we're going to have several other signs. But starting at 3:00, the presentations will actually be at 4:00, but if you come at 3:00, you get food. And so we would invite anybody that wants to come to help celebrate this special moment to come down to Derby on Veterans Day, and we'd, we'd love to have you. And once again, we appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else want to speak?
Mike?
They know, they know that I always want to talk. Purple Heart. Now, this is the first time that Derby has been involved with the Purple Heart. In the early 2000s, we replaced our bridge on 87th Street, and that is a Purple Heart Bridge also. So we're very proud of our military and our military heritage. What we'd like to see is Sedgwick County take the ball and be the first county in the state to be a Purple Heart county. I don't believe there's any other counties in the state, and we are a very military-oriented community. I mean, we have one of the best neighbors in the world, the McConnell Air Force Base right next to us, and we do need to do everything we can to honor these veterans, because it gives us the opportunity to do what we want to do every day. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment as well.
Thank you. Real quick. First of all, Commissioner Howell and I are the only two veterans on this board today, and we appreciate your service to our nation. And Commissioner Howell and I have spoken about trying to get Sedgwick County to be a Purple Heart county, so I want to let him carry the ball on that, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Howell. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I got him before they, before they walked away from the podium. Let me just say a couple of comments. Again, I think that the idea of having Sedgwick County become the first county in Kansas as a Purple Heart county is a great initiative, and I would like to carry the water on that. I love our veterans, and I know that people all around me, I think all the Commissioners love our veterans, but I especially appreciate Commissioner Dennis because of his long career there in, in the Air Force. He really has a lot of great experiences he can relate, and so appreciate him as a friend of mine that we get to reminisce about our military service. But at the end of the day, one thing I'm so impressed about Derby, and I want to just really commend Randy White, the mayor of Derby, Derby really is a, is a military community. They love our veterans, and it's, it's obvious everywhere you go, they are welcome, they are loved, they are, they are a very big part of our, of our city. And so I think this is extremely fitting that Derby leads the way on this, and I appreciate your, your work to get this done. I might look to you for some help to get this done for the county as well, if that's okay, because you know how to get it done now, so we might need some help to figure out how to, how to, how to do this.
I have a staff that would be extremely supportive of you.
All right. Well, let's work together on that, and I, I'm just excited to, to see this happen. I want to just commend each and every one of you. I do want to talk about Mike for just a minute. Mike is, Mike Sainden, in the red here. You are an amazing person. He is, I think, the glue that holds all this together in the city of Derby. Anybody who's got anything related to veterans, they all know Mike Sainden. He is the center of everything that happens in Derby that deals with veterans, and so I just want to say thank you, Mike, for all your great service. You are truly a servant of the community, and I just want to say I really appreciate all you do. I know you'll be at every event that deals with veterans. We give them honor and recognition, you're every place doing everything, so thank you for your great service to our city and to our community.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before you all go, at the risk of us getting up and down five times today, I think it'd be appropriate to take some pictures with the commission, if you all don't mind. Okay? We're going to step away from the bench and come down to the floor. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, proclamation declaring PBS Kansas Veterans Coming Home Salute Day.
Thank you. I have asked to read this one myself. Whereas veterans have stepped forward to serve our country and defend our way of life, with honor and distinction, generations of servicemen and servicewomen, women have taken up arms to win our independence, preserve our nation, and secure our freedom. These heroes have put their lives on line so that we might live in a world that is safer, freer, and more just, and we owe them a profound debt of gratitude. And whereas many veterans have continued their life of service through innumerable hours working to improve our communities, their dedication to serving fellow veterans and others in the veteran community provides countless benefits for years to come. Their tireless service, can-do attitude, and humility is an example, example for us all. And whereas veterans returning home from service have earned our respect and deserve our recognition as they strive to better the community they call home. Coming back to civilian life brings new challenges, new opportunities, and compelling stories of courage and accomplishment. And whereas we must come together as a community to honor these veterans and extend our commitment to welcome them home, learn from their sacrifice, and help them succeed in all they do. And whereas November 11th, 2022 is Veterans Day, an annual reminder to honor all of our veterans for their service. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize November 5th as PBS Kansas Veterans Coming Home Salute Day with respect for and recognition of the contributions our service members have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world and at home. Move to approve the proclamation. We have a motion in two seconds. Madam Clerk, I don't see any comments. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And accepting this is Laura Taylor and Phil Richardson from KPTS, and also Saturday night, we do have a Veterans Coming Home Ceremony that I'm sure that they'll be talking about here momentarily. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much to the commission for adopting this proclamation. I also wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Dennis and thank you to Jim Howell, Commissioner Howell for your service, and also Commissioner, Commissioner Howell for sitting on our committee. Every single veteran has a personal story to tell. They're all inspirational, and we're really proud that we're going to be able to honor four veterans and a business that serves veterans this Saturday, the 5th, at our annual banquet. But you'll also be able to see these stories of these veterans on PBS Kansas throughout the following week, so please tune in to watch these stories and to honor these veterans, but also please think about capturing the stories of the veterans in your own life.
Thank you. Phil, did you want to say anything?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Dennis, and all Commissioners, thank you for having us today. Just a little background on the Veterans Coming Home, it was a huge initiative PBS put out several years ago, and they saw the realization that veterans coming home do need our help. They need to help, have help getting reintegrated in the community, into their families, and into their jobs. It's very important. And so locally, we took that initiative serious here in Wichita, and wanted to be a part of that initiative that PBS launched, and that is hence why we do such a great job, in our opinions, of serving veterans. Not only do we provide great programming for veterans, but we also like to serve them in our community, and we're so thrilled to have this proclamation. We are truly appreciative, and we would invite you to, if you want to come to the dinner, today's a deadline to, to get in on that. It's a fundraiser for the station so that we can continue the great initiatives that we do for veterans in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I know we have a table from Sedgwick County. I think Commissioner Howell and his wife, and my wife and I are coming, I don't know how many more seats that we still have at the table, but you'll see several of us Saturday night. Appreciate it. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a quick comment. I don't know how many years this has been going on now, I should know the number of years, but. Eight years. You know, those that served before me, especially those that served, say, the Vietnam War era and before, when they came home to America, they, they met a lot of hostility in our country. And I think that we've done a lot of good in our country to kind of shift that attitude of returning veterans to something that shows them we want to help them be successful in our community. I actually got out of the military in 1991, and when I came back, it was like a vacuum. Again, I didn't have the same reception, I think, that those that before me had, I think maybe even almost had a negative reception before me, but today I say that when veterans get out of the military, they, they need to be transitioned back into the, to civilian life, and, and I think that this is a great opportunity for us to recognize they have special needs. A lot of them have PTSD, a lot of them have challenges trying to find a job that, that works with what they learned in the military, for example. So the end of the day, these, these veterans, I think, are more, maybe more now than ever, have been appreciated as they, as they come home, but it's intentional, and I think PBS Kansas is doing a great job of making this very intentional. One thing I like about this event is there are veterans in our community, especially some of the people who served maybe a while back, they are recognized, and their stories are told, and you would not believe some of the things that people have done. It is absolutely amazing. In fact, YouTube video, there's a YouTube video channel, you can see some of these recipients from prior years. It is such a moving experience to hear their stories and hear, see the things that they have done. Most of these folks have served in unbelievable ways. When they come home, they continue to serve in unbelievable ways, and so they, they deserve to be honored and recognized, and that's what this is all about. So I'm glad, I'm glad to get to be a part of this event, both on the planning side and participating in celebrating these veterans, but I just want to say I appreciate PBS Kansas for leading the way to make this a very intentional and on purpose event. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and again, I want to express my gratitude for all the veterans. I had a, we're recognizing women veterans at the parade on Saturday. My cousin was in the first cadre of female And with that, Commissioner Howell, would you like to go back down a second time and recognize this? We're going to take another short break. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, proclamation declaring Wichita Junior ROTC Leadership Week.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Cruz to read this. She has a daughter in JROTC.
Thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity. Whereas Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps was officially implemented in American high schools in 1916, began in Kansas in 1917, and in Wichita in 1994, making this our 28th anniversary. And whereas cadet leadership programs were started in select middle schools in 1997, making Wichita a leader in the nation in this initiative. And whereas the JROTC and leadership programs are recognized in Wichita for building citizenship, good character in our youth, and whereas there are now more than 2,200 Wichita youth participating as cadets in 17 of our public schools. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Lacy Cruz, on behalf of Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 5th through the 11th, 2022, as Wichita Junior JROTC Leadership Week in recognition of these fine young men and women who are becoming better leaders and citizens for the future through their involvement in the junior JROTC leadership programs. I will make a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Second. I don't see any comments. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And here to accept the proclamation is Cadet Colonel Carol Laura, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jacob Berry, and Cadet Command Sergeant Major Jordan Wiltsey. I hope I said that right. Yeah? Okay.
Welcome.
Okay. We want to thank you guys for this proclamation, and I think that we, as cadets, really appreciate the support that you guys give us. Without you guys, I don't think we'd be able to make this happen. And as another comment, we would love for you guys to announce this proclamation at our ceremony that will be taking place on Thursday.
Thank you. Just to reiterate some things that have been said before, we do have the Veterans' Day Parade this Saturday, and that is going to start down Main Street and ending at Water Walk. And we have over 70 entries for the parade, so you guys wouldn't want to miss it. And this will be our 17th year that we have done this parade, so it's really exciting to be a part of it. Thank you.
Okay. This is our 28th year for the ceremony, and as you said, we have over 2,200 cadets involved in the ROTC and Leadership Program, and our goal is to get all of them there for the ceremony. The cadets' information that are chosen will conduct a passing interview at the conclusion. And also, I would like to add, in April, we have our National Wars Ceremony where the selected cadets get the Purple Heart Medal for ROTC. And I would also like to thank you for your time and for the passing of the proclamation.
Well, thank you very much, all three of you, for being here today. I mentioned to each one of them before the meeting that I'd sit on their selection board that selected each one of them to that position. Now, they did not remember me, but... But it is my honor every year, I have an opportunity to sit on that because one of my heroes is your boss, Colonel Robert Hester. He does a fantastic job with JROTC and also in supporting our veterans. As a matter of fact, last year, he received the award at the Veterans' Coming Home Ceremony that PBS Kansas put on. So, we appreciate each and every one of you for what you do for our veterans, and JROTC has a special place in my heart. If you take a look at, a few years ago, there was a study done, and during that study, they found that among your cohorts, you have a higher graduation rate than your cohorts do. You have higher test scores, and it shows what the benefits are of JROTC. So, I appreciate what you do. And I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Cruz for a moment, after, and then Commissioner Howell. After we're done, we'd still like to come down and have a picture taken with you. So, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to mention, last week was the first time my daughter put on her uniform, and I could tell that she walked a little taller. And just being in this leadership course has, I have seen, given her a little bit more confidence. And so, I'm excited to see where she'll go in this, and I just want to say thank you for your leadership today and showing, especially the two ladies up here, that it's possible to be in leadership, and I just appreciate your service, and I look forward to walking in the parade and seeing you this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Just want to say thank you, Chairman. I just want to say that I'm looking forward to the ceremony on Thursday. If you haven't ever seen a military parade, it's pretty impressive. There's, I don't know how many kids, hundreds of thousands, it seems like, young people walking in this parade, and they are all in uniform, and they're all doing a great job. So, to me, it's exciting to see the generation that's up and coming and having that type of leadership opportunities. I think it's just amazing. But I want to say one other thing. I served for five years in the Air Force, and I think I had about two and a half rows of ribbons. I just wanted to point out that the uniforms that I'm seeing here, I call that fruit salad. That is amazing. Very impressive. You must be doing some incredible things to get that type of fruit salad. So, congratulations for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments, but again, we're going to take a little break and come down, and we'd love to have a picture taken with you. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz said we were getting our steps in today, so we're going to continue that. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, proclamation declaring Apprenticeship Week.
And I have asked Commissioner Meitzner to read this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This does not have a military proclamation impact. This is back to workforce and apprenticeship, so it's really good. What a great morning. I'll read it. Whereas the continued growth of a strong Kansas economy depends on a highly trained and agile workforce. And whereas registered apprenticeship is an employer-driven, earn-while-you-learn model that enables businesses to develop long-term, sustainable training programs that have immediate impacts on increased productivity and imposes the quality of their work, and improves the quality of their workforce. And whereas registered apprenticeship allows industries to legitimize robust training programs that are developed directly from industry standards that face significant shortages of skilled workforce. And whereas registered apprenticeship supports training providers to collaborate directly with employers for the overall benefit of Kansas workers. And whereas registered apprenticeship allows Kansas workers to build rewarding and successful careers that better the quality of their lives and develops an enduring pipeline of talent crucial to the future of all Kansas. And whereas Sedgwick County encourages the use of this registered apprenticeship program as a means of supporting a robust workforce and business environment. Therefore, be it resolved that Chairman David Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 14th through the 20th of this year as Apprenticeship Week in Sedgwick County and surrounding communities, and we urge all citizens to join in this observation. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve.
Second. I don't see any discussion. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And here to accept this, we have a few people. Brenda Corbin, Flagship; Jeff Townsend, Sheet Metal; Keely Turner, IEC; Luis Rodriguez, Workforce Alliance Board; and Melody Head, RA Coordinator. So, thank you all for being here this morning, and... Good morning, and welcome.
Well, good morning, Chairman Dennis and County Commissioners. Thank you very much for the recognition today. I'm Keith Wine. I'm the president and CEO of the Workforce Alliance of South Central Kansas, and joined by a group of folks, and we so much appreciate the recognition of this. And the Workforce Alliance certainly promotes registered apprenticeship, has for a long time. It is becoming a very powerful tool for the state of Kansas and certainly our region. And along with the strong programs, partnerships we've had with programs like electrical workers, plumbers, and pipe fitters, and our sheet metal, workers are actually expanding into new opportunities for registered apprenticeship. So, I'm very pleased to announce, and would like the folks from Flagship to step forward to talk a little bit more about this, but the state of Kansas has just approved the first registered apprenticeship for information technology, for IT. So, we'll be able to start expanding to that. Very excited about that. Continue to support our trades. A lot of great work going on in there, and we're having a breakfast at the Workforce Center on the 14th, and we invite all the Sedgwick County Commissioners to come join us for that, and we will send you some information. But I would like to recognize my friends from Flagship to talk a little bit about the brand-new registered apprenticeship program and technology.
Morning, and welcome.
Hi, Luis Rodriguez. I know some of you. So, Flagship Kansas is an association of technology companies interested in elevating the ability for our communities to support the workforce for tech companies in Wichita and develop a lot more tech companies in Wichita to add to our community and in job prosperity. So, when Flagship formed, we had one of our pillars be workforce development, and as we've evolved and grown, we were able to bring Brenda Corbin, here next to me, onboard to focus on developing registered apprenticeships for technology positions. A lot of people think registered apprenticeships are limited to trade skills in the sense, like you've heard, sheet metal, plumbing, electricians. There's a place for that in software skills and IT skills, and so, we wanted to explore that. With Brenda's hard work, she's able to achieve a first registered apprenticeship in IT just how many days ago?
Last Friday.
Last Friday. That's awesome. We're very excited about that. We're very grateful for your support on it, and we hope to continue the work.
I didn't know I was going to be put on the spot here. I went through apprenticeship, like, at a Wichita public school, we had paper and tape, and we'd make our fittings and our ductwork and do our layout, and that was it. My welding was one day in the basement of a 259 school. So, now we have a full-blown apprenticeship training facility, and it's got, you know, all the tools that a young person needs to learn the trade, which adds to the on-the-job, you know, the key to any apprenticeship is on-the-job. I'm hearing about this IT thing. I'm thinking 44 years of this sheet metal stuff is old. I might, I might apply for a new apprenticeship. But it's a, it's a very, you know, worthwhile and a good option for a young person to consider as they're coming into the workforce. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we appreciate it, and just one last thing, or two last things. We've recently opened up a brand-new training facility with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union to, again, add to some of those high-tech tools that Jeff just talked about. And Spirit Arrow Systems was recently recognized by the state of Kansas for their expansion of registered apprenticeship in strong partnership with the IBEW. So, it is one of the fantastic tools we have in place to help grow our workforce, and again, thank you very much for your support today.
Well, thank you, Keith. We appreciate you being here today. One of the things that the commission always helps is economic development. But we can't get economic development if we don't have a skilled workforce to put in all these different positions when we're trying to recruit these new businesses to come to Sedgwick County. So, programs like the new plumbers and pipe fitters, I just toured here a week or so ago when they had the open house, those are critical. And I recognized that after I retired from the military. I went back to college and got a teaching certificate and taught at North High School, and I taught computer repair, Cisco, CCNA, taught A+, Oracle Database, different courses like this, so... That's how we get the skilled workforce of the future, so it's very important. And keeping with tradition, we've already taken three pictures. We might as well take a couple more, so we'll come back down. Thank you.
I'll go last. You guys... Sure. Do you have a good question? Yeah. Listen, listen in the back. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you.
to trade skills in the sense, like you've heard, sheet metal, plumbing, electricians. There's a place for that in software skills and IT skills. And so, we wanted to explore that. With Brenda's hard work, she's able to achieve a first registered apprenticeship in IT just how many days ago?
Last Friday.
Last Friday. That's awesome. We're very excited about that. We're very grateful for your support on it, and we hope to continue the work.
I didn't know I was going to be put on the spot here. I went through apprenticeship, like, at a Wichita public school, we had paper and tape, and we'd make our fittings and our ductwork and do our layout. And that was it. My welding was one day in the basement of a 259 school. So, now we have a full-blown apprenticeship training facility, and it's got, you know, all the tools that a young person needs to learn the trade, which adds to the on-the-job, you know, the key to any apprenticeship is on-the-job. I'm hearing about this IT thing. I'm thinking 44 years of this sheet metal stuff is old. I might apply for a new apprenticeship. But it's a very, you know, worthwhile and a good option for a young person to consider as they're coming into the workforce. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we appreciate it. And just one last thing, or two last things. We've recently opened up a branded training facility with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union to, again, add to some of those high-tech tools that Jeff just talked about. And Spirit Aero Systems was recently recognized by the state of Kansas for their expansion of registered apprenticeship in strong partnership with the IBEW. So, it is one of the fantastic tools we have in place to help grow our workforce. And again, thank you very much for your support today.
Well, thank you, Keith. We appreciate you being here today. One of the things that the Commission always helps is economic development. But we can't get economic development if we don't have a skilled workforce to put in all these different positions when we're trying to recruit these new businesses to come to Sedgwick County. So, programs like the new plumbers and pipe fitters, I just toured here a week or so ago when they had the open house, those are critical. And I recognize that after I retired from the military. I went back to college and got a teaching certificate and taught at North High School. And I taught computer repair, Cisco, CCNA, taught A+, Oracle Database, different courses like this. So, that's how we get the skilled workforce of the future. So, it's very important. And keeping with tradition, we've already taken three pictures. We might as well take a couple more, so we'll come back down. Thank you.
I'll go last. Item F, proclamation declaring Sedgwick County Reads to Preschoolers Month.
And I've asked Commissioner Lopez to read this one.
Thank you. And please excuse me, I might be a little bit out of breath getting up and down this many times in a row. So, okay, whereas November is Kansas Reads to Preschoolers Month, and whereas 63% of Kansas 4th graders are not reading at grade level, and children who are not reading at grade level when entering the 4th grade are four times less likely to graduate from high school, and 2/3 will likely end up in prison or in poverty. And whereas 64% of kindergarten through 3rd grade students are at risk. And whereas the Wichita Literacy Coalition has been created to develop and implement a collective plan to increase kindergarten readiness for children and families experiencing the greatest need. And whereas Sedgwick County values improving kindergarten readiness and improves high school graduation rates and therefore positively impacts workforce readiness and the holistic success of the Kansas economy, now therefore be resolved that Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize November 2022 as Sedgwick County Reads to Preschoolers Month in Sedgwick County and encourage everyone to read to the littles in their life. So, I will make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second it. Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And here to accept this is Larry Daniels, the Executive Director of the Wichita Literacy Coalition.
Welcome. And we have a lot of teachers here in the audience.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Larry with the Wichita Literacy Coalition at Public Policy and Management Center. Just want to say thank you to the Chairman and its Commissioners for adopting this proclamation. For those of you who have a little one in your life this month, grab a book, read with them, be a part of that process with them, and carry it out throughout the year. It's not just in November. So, just wanted to say a quick thank you. Thank you to all of our providers who are part of this coalition. And I'm just going to make a couple comments as well.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just want to make sure that you all know, if you don't have a little at home, you have a community full of early childhood programs from our Wichita Public Schools to places like The Y, Small Childcare Centers, and Rainbow United. Everybody's here. I'm going to miss somebody at the top. There's a place for you to read. So, please make sure that when we send you some invites, that you take advantage of that. Come to see early childhood and literacy in action here in your community, because there's great work with little people in lots of little rooms.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Well, not to be left out, why don't you just stay up there? We'll take one more picture. Commissioner Lopez is getting her steps to. Well, now we're missing most of our audience. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item G, discussion of tornado after-action report and improvement plan.
Morning, Julie. Do we have a picture of you standing in front of a bunch of tornado debris?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I don't know how you follow five proclamations in an hour into this and talk about tornadoes, but we'll hopefully have a lot of positive that you'll all see here shortly. All right. Julie Stimson, Sedgwick County Emergency Management Director. It's been just over six months since we had the April 29 tornado, and I just want to share with you the after-action report on how we analyzed our response and recovery efforts, talk about some strengths that we saw, and then some areas of improvement. The after-action report is actually a 55-page document, but I'm kind of going to break it down a little bit so you guys understand what's all in this report. We'll talk about the incident overview, again, a little bit about the report. We'll talk about incident management, some of the strengths and improvement, a little bit on our improvement plan, and then the long-term recovery efforts. I just want to bring attention to the uniqueness of this tornado with the radar image. We knew this event was going to happen. We were already on standby. We had tornadoes in the state occurring on this day. National Weather Service gave us days of warning that the elements would come together for this potential. So, this is one of those tornadoes that didn't follow Kansas tornado rules and literally just kind of popped out of nowhere. We had a thunderstorm complex that was moving east, pretty much exiting our county. And on the very back end of it, where you see this little debris ball, that is not precipitation. That is actually the tornado. As you guys know, this tornado was very photoed, very videoed, and it was because there was no precipitation around it. It literally just kind of came out of the sky with very little warning. And then the bottom view is what it looked like from Cheney. One of our fellow colleagues from Colley County was at a Cheney, I don't remember what sport, but it was a game. But that was the view from Cheney looking towards Andover about the same time that that tornado. So, just a little brief, you see tornadoes. There were actually two tornadoes. The one that we're most familiar with is the EF3 that went, touched down in our rural Sedgwick County area and went into Andover. That occurred at 8:10 PM. I was on the ground for 20 minutes. It was rated as an EF3 with peak winds of 155 miles an hour. The path length was 12.9 miles. Its max width was 440 yards, and we did sustain three injuries, zero fatalities. The other tornado is kind of the forgotten tornado. There was, at 9:05 PM, an EF1 tornado touched down in rural Butler County near the town of Rosalia. Peak winds were 100 miles an hour, 7.8 mile path length, and ironically, the max width was the same as the EF3 tornado that we had just experienced at 440 yards and then zero injuries. Some of the statistics below from both tornadoes, for Sedgwick County, we had 96 structures affected. We had 22 of those were damaged or destroyed residences. Our estimated damages were at 4.5 million. We still don't have a final number because insurance companies are still working with our residents. So, this was the preliminary based on appraised values with our folks. What the after-action report is, is a documentation of the incident, what the strengths and areas for improvement are. It also lists out our objectives. It kind of gives us a way for us to measure our response. We decided that we were going to do a joint jurisdiction, single incident report. We'll talk a little bit about the governments coming together to manage this as a single incident versus two separate incidences. And then within our core teams, we also encourage departments to sit down and do after-action reports for their processes and plans and procedures to see what they did well and what could be improved. We also want to document lessons learned, both good and bad, for future planning. And like I mentioned, this document is 55 pages. It's broken down into the incident overview, an analysis of core capabilities, which is pretty much how we measure what we're doing, what we observed, what plans and procedures that we're referencing when we're kind of grading ourselves, if you will, and then what the analysis of the observation was. And then there's an appendix that assigns improvement areas to departments and things to work on and what plans may need to be adjusted, and a list of organizations. And then the last appendix is acronyms. So, a lot of information in this report. It is a little bit redundant, but it's a formal report that Homeland Security has us uses to keep it organized. So, this after-action report covers the time period of April 29 through May 15, so about a two-week tornado response period. There's still activity going on, but what the data is in here is from that time period. So, please keep that in mind as we move forward. The creation of this report was very labor-intensive, a lot of time put into it. We had 60 individuals representing 28 agencies from federal down to the local to our volunteer organizations participating in after-action meetings and reviews of this report. So, this was a very, very lengthy process with a lot of hands in to make sure we documented things accurately. There was a core group that pretty much compiled all of the data, myself on the core group, my colleague in Butler County, Carrie, Jenny McCoslin, who's the Andover City Administrator, Andover Fire Chief, and the Andover Police Chief. Not to say that our partners weren't engaged. These were just the core team that were physically putting this report together. As we had drafts, we would send it out to our partner agencies and give them the opportunity to give us feedback on how it looked. And then we finally had the final after-action report and improvement plan published to the core group in September, and then now we are presenting it to our local jurisdictions. So, incident management, and you guys read the whole report, right, all 55 pages? I'm not going to get too much into the weeds, but I just want to kind of show you how we measure ourselves as far as our response. So, FEMA lists out 32 core capabilities. We identified 11 of them that applied to our tornado response, and from those 11, we created 13 incident objectives. And this is what we use in the after-action report to measure on our plans, how did we meet our incident objectives. And those details are very spelled out into this report, but I'm not going to read it to you for sake of time. So, I just kind of want to give an overview of some of the major strengths, the massive mutual aid and already established working relationships. I'm going to show you a photo at the end of a partner fire department that was en route, driving into Andover from Andover Road, debris everywhere, and the tornado still on the ground, and he was already in Andover. So, the massive mutual response, couldn't have been any better. Plan flexibility to the incident. We actually wound up combining our counties, EOCs, and the Incident Command Post into one location. FEMA would probably frown upon that because that's not what we typically do, and that's not really what our plans say we do. But based on this incident, it made sense. And we'll kind of go into why that made sense and why we combined efforts. It won't work in every situation. If there had been more jurisdictions impacted, we may not have been able to do this, but it worked very, very well for this incident response. Cross-jurisdiction coordination, we had county, city, and so we had Sedgwick County, the city, and Butler County all in the same room, working under a common operating picture, working under those 13 objectives that we had set out collectively. We had hybrid operations, so we did have a small COVID outbreak within the command staff, but no one really knew about it because operations still went on because we were able to flex and have hybrid operations, virtual meetings, and in-person meetings. We had both health departments helping us to manage and keep that small outbreak small. And again, most folks didn't even know that was going on because we were able to flex to a hybrid operation. And then another strength is the quick EOC activations and disaster declarations. Like I said, this was an advanced notice event. We knew the elements were going to be favorable for these type of storms days in advance, so we already had a lot of folks watching and ready to respond anticipating this. The only thing we didn't anticipate was it was going to be the very last storm that was in our county at that time, and it just barely touched down into our jurisdiction before moving on to Andover. So, I just kind of, with the photos, I kind of want to show that, how this picture, whoops. The upper-right corner is our Emergency Operations Center. We did activate, and we got everyone in the room to get situational awareness. We were activated in this room for about 24 hours and before we realized that we were going to be more effective if we went into Andover. We started talking to the Butler County Emergency Manager. Her EOC is actually in Augusta. It didn't make sense for her to be in Augusta and us to be in Wichita. We made, kind of found a collective location at the Andover Fire Station for all of us to be in the room, again, keeping us all on that same operating procedures. And that is us below on the bottom. That is the Andover Fire Room that we all worked out of. So, that was the Incident Command Post and actually the Emergency Operations Center altogether. Another strength I want to highlight is the Multi-Agency Resource Center. We had so much support and so much assistance from our local volunteer organizations. The Mark, as we call it, is the Multi-Agency Resource Center. The United Way of the Plains oversaw this. It was set up in the Andover Community Center, and this was like a one-stop shop for folks to come in and get their basic needs met. If they needed water, if they needed food, cleanup supplies, diapers, toiletries, we had everything. All the donations were coming in. And this also is where we also met with the residents, and we got them into the case management system where they told us, you know, what impacts they had, what were some of their needs that they had. And it got them into the United Way Case Management System, which we'll talk about more into the recovery. This is not inclusive. I mean, there was so much support even that worked at this center. We had a lot of private businesses that were out in the field, but the overwhelming community's response to this was absolutely phenomenal. I mean, they even thought of things. We had the Kansas Insurance Commission from the state come visit and meet with residents on insurance concerns. We had pet therapy, which was great for the survivors, but it also worked out really nice for first responders, kind of gave them a break to be in the moment and pet some of those little fur babies. We had a rabbit and a stroller and everything that was brought in. So, but just, again, overwhelming response from everyone in the community. Then we also had a volunteer reception center set up that was managed by the Great Plains United Methodist Conference. This was at the Andover United Methodist Church. So, people want to help, and what we try to do is control the help so we have safe volunteers and that we're able to support logistically the volunteer efforts that are going on. The first day, we had a little bit of a challenge. There was 800 people that showed up, and we only had one way to check them in, which really created a bottleneck. But we frantically got a couple more of those electronic check-ins and were able to get our folks assigned. So, some other challenges that we had, we had weather. We were, it was still raining and storming throughout this two-week period that I'm talking about. So, we actually had seven days within this time of the report where we sent out work orders and volunteers. And there was over, let me get my statistics right here, 2,000 volunteers that calculated 9,000 hours, and that is just the check-in and checkout. So, we know there was a lot more people in the neighborhoods that were helping. But just, again, a phenomenal support effort from the community coming over. Neighbors helping neighbors. And it really played key in the fact that we did not qualify for federal assistance. Our community is getting our residents through this disaster. So, it's just a phenomenal show of support. Some areas of improvement, and I don't want this to be misunderstood, that doesn't mean failures. These are just areas of improvement that if we had to do things again, we may do things a little bit differently for efficiency purposes or just to do things just a little bit better. We had a lot of folks in our unified command structure that were assigned positions, but they lacked the in-depth proficiency to execute. And we didn't really do them any favors. We didn't have checklists. We didn't have job aids for them to kind of say, this is a complex incident, and here are the things that you're going to be working on. And that's part of our improvement plan. We got some of those things being done. And then accountability and resource tracking. Everyone was asking for lights, asking for generators, you know, asking for all of these supplies. But at the time, those initial response hours, we didn't have a logistics system set up to track all of that. So, we wound up having light towers arrive, and they disappeared for a short time, but then we wound up finding them in a public works yard. So, just the overall accountability, things that we can do better right from the very beginning. Operational communications, the interoperability of the 800 megahertz system. In Butler County, experienced a massive bogging down of their system in that first hour. They had 800 busy outs, which is when you try to key up and you get that kind of donk thing and you can't get through. They had 800 busy outs in that first hour. So, quickly overwhelmed their system. One thing we did not do that we want to do better next time is consolidating the incident traffic into the mutual aid channels. The state provides us channels, like common channels we can use, that gets us off of those normal channels that we use every day and helps kind of clear up some of that traffic. Another thing we need to do is do some more training on radio discipline. Everyone's excited and everyone wants to be talking on the radio. Everyone's excited and everyone wants to be talking on the radios, but when they do that, it bogs down the system for that emergency traffic. So we got some work to do there. There were some training opportunities and some things that we can work on during exercises. Another area, situational assessment, collecting all that data. Multiple organizations go out to the damaged sites, if you will. We, I think we calculated, it was like either between five and seven times a resident was bothered, if you will, kind of asking some of that repetitive information. Are you insured? Are you a renter? Are you a homeowner? So we're trying to figure out a way to collect the data more collectively so we don't have to send so many folks out to get information. There was some time delays. We were still using pen and paper and clipboards to get like damage assessments done, so that made a delay for our GIS folks to be mapping things in. Nothing wrong, but there's ways we can do this a little more expediently and a little more efficiently. And then information sharing with those not involved in the room. We did great. We created a bunch of reports, and we talked about it within our core members that were inside the rooms, but we didn't really disperse the information to folks who were not in the room, and that's something that we're looking at. Again, a simple checklist will help remind us that, hey, don't forget, you need to share this information. Public information, we really needed to set up a joint information center. The way we had it was the City of Andover Public Information Officer pretty much took the lead for information sharing and information gathering, and then we were somewhat just kind of sharing what they were pushing out because they were ground zero. They had the bulk of the disaster in their jurisdiction, so it made sense for them. But not all the information applied to all the jurisdictions, and one prime example is with our debris management. Andover was pushing out to put their debris at the curbs because the equipment was coming through to pick up the debris. Our area, we don't have curbs, we have ditches. As Mr. Weber will be like, "We do not put our debris in ditches, especially when there's weather expected and rain." So we had some frustrated residents because they were doing what, you know, the information was saying to do, but we wound up having to tell them that we need to pull that stuff out of the ditches, so a little bit of an improvement area there. The media inquiries, a joint information center, we could have pushed out like a contact phone number for the media to call. They were just calling anybody who would answer their phone, asking questions, and that's certainly something that we can approve upon, so we got some action items on that as well. And then again, with information sharing, survivor outreach. We were relying heavily on social media and the local news, but our residents were out in their properties. They were sifting through their belongings. They were on their phones. They weren't on their computers. They weren't watching TV. So a lot of folks, we realized this was a problem about a week into it when people were still saying they didn't know where or how to get resources. And that's when we realized that we still need to go back to pen and paper sometimes and hand them tangible things that says, "Here's how you get help," and not relying on that social media platform. And then also, a lot of information was being pushed out in English. We were working to get things in multiple languages, specifically Spanish, but we had some delays and challenges and that, so what we're wanting to do now is get some pre-made material in multiple languages so we're ready to go next time. And then I mentioned a little bit about volunteer management. When you have everybody wanting to help, you know, you don't want to turn away help. Our residents need help, but there's, if we can do it in a controlled manner, we can make sure we have logistics and support for those volunteers, like meals, waters, porta-potties in the right areas. And then, again, capturing the data. If we have folks checking in and out, we can capture those volunteer hours to really speak to what the community efforts are to recover from a disaster. Spontaneous volunteers also created a lot of duplicate work. We had a system that we had clients coming in to get work orders assigned to their properties, and we would send a team out there, and there'd already be somebody there working kind of on their own, so there was duplication of efforts. Our volunteers were given PPE. They were given safety vests. They were given safety briefings. And again, that's how we want to keep our volunteers safe, too, but when we have spontaneous volunteers, it's kind of hard to manage, but we did our best, and we worked with what we could do, but just something to keep in mind for next time is we really want that volunteer reception to be somewhat controlled so we're all safe. Talked about Appendix A, the improvement plans. So some of those areas of improvement I talked about, we have a lot of action items assigned. The state, Kansas Division of Emergency Management, actually just announced that they're providing a damage assessment app called On Lion that is going to help us collect data from the very first people on scene. They can start making pins, and then folks can just, as we're going out, we can start adding information, and everyone can see that same information, so we're really excited about that. Like I mentioned, multi-language information sharing to include forms. If we have those pre-made, we won't have very many delays in getting information out in multiple languages. We, Sedgwick County, is taking the lead on creating like a response and recovery packet to distribute to residents. Like I mentioned, the tangible items that we can hand to our residents and say, "Here's what to expect. Here's how you get help." One thing we want to do is debris management information. How do they separate, you know, what do we want them to separate their debris? Their vegetative should stay just vegetative. Their construction and debris waste should be in another pile. There's a really nice diagram, and debris management happens, the soon as sun comes up, residents are starting to clean out their debris, so we want to educate them as soon as we can on how to do it so we don't have any kind of frustration down the road. Liability waivers, that was a delay for some of us to be working on individual properties. We have to get written permission from the resident to be on the property to do cleanup, so that's something that sometimes delays us is getting those signatures. And then talking about mental health resources. Again, that starts right from the very beginning. You know, folks who go through a tornado, just went through a trauma, and they may need help right away. It may, they may need help down the road, and so we want to include some information about mental health, especially during a traumatic event. Another area that we have some projects working on is the command and general staff training. Like I mentioned, we had assigned folks into these command and general staff roles that we don't really do on a day-to-day basis. We do this in complex incidents. We're wanting to build a local incident management team where we have a local team that has that proficiency, multiple members that we can kind of recruit into these type of incidents. And then, like I mentioned, too, job aids and checklists, simple things to keep us on track. Those little gentle reminders that we all need when there's chaos and we're getting tons of information and a little overloaded. And then, like I mentioned, the Joint Information Center. We actually just had a public information officer training here locally about a month ago, so we've already started some actions on that and getting some of our Joint Information Center-type trainings together, and I'm envisioning having like a PIO, Public Information Officer, working group where we have all of the organizations that have information officers coming together so everyone knows each other before a disaster. Mentioned long-term recovery, that is still ongoing. Case management is being overseen by the United Way of the Plains. This is what they do. They're doing a phenomenal job. They've got a great group of folks working with our residents, addressing unmet needs after insurance. This committee is run by bylaws. It's very objective. The committee makes sure that we have equitable distribution of recovery funds based on unmet needs, and then long-term recovery is just that, it's long-term. We want things to move faster always, but there's a lot of obstacles that have to slow things down. And the membership that's on this long-term recovery include elected officials, myself and the Butler County Emergency Manager, City of Andover Administration, there's nonprofit organizations, there's a few private businesses, and of course, the United Way. So it's a very collective group of folks to make sure that we are taking care of our residents in a fair and equitable way with the funds that were raised. And then this is that photo that I was talking about that shows that massive mutual aid. This was from the Butler County Fire District 3 dash cam, literally driving up Andover Road while the tornado was still on the ground, and that's how fast some of our folks were arriving on scene. So we were, we were ready to go. Like I said, the Weather Service and news media did a great job in giving us a heads-up by days of this event, so it panned out here. And the fact that we have a tornado that was very photogenic and videoed, and we had no fatalities and very few injuries, this tornado has a lot of attention across the nation, so it's seen as a success story. Our residents knew what to do. They had very little warning. Folks were getting in their basements. They were getting in those interior rooms, doing exactly what we would want them to do. So I got to give kudos to the residents for taking it seriously and following those procedures. It had been a long time since we had a tornado come through, and our residents knew what to do, so. Lot of information. There's more in that report. If you guys have any questions, if you read through that, by all means, please ask, but I'll stand for any questions and comments that you may have now.
Well, thanks, Julie. I appreciate it. I know that you and Rusty came around and briefed every commissioner individually on the entire report and provided each and every one of us a copy of the report. I appreciate everything that all of the folks in Sedgwick County accomplished immediately after that tornado. First thing the next morning, Commissioner Lopez and I were out with Jonathan and toured the areas in both Sedgwick and Butler County, and I was very proud. I saw people from, our staff from Fire District Number One. They'd been out all night making sure that the area was safe, making sure that electricity wasn't laying on the ground, that people could get electrocuted and so forth. Our EMS saw them the next morning, right away. Even things like animal control was out there the next morning. Public Works was involved immediately. Our entire staff came together, and I appreciate that very much. Then we had an opportunity to go over to, into Butler County and see the damage there. While we were still in Sedgwick County, I was amazed at the number of volunteers who were already there, working, trying to help the people that were, yeah, lost everything in most cases with what we saw. But once we got over into Butler County, the other commissioners from Butler County were there, so we had an opportunity to interface with them and let them know that we'll provide whatever support that they need from Sedgwick County, and we had our Fire District Number One located over at the command post there in the Dillons parking lot, and they were working hard. Our Public Works was not only involved in Sedgwick County but in Butler County, so it was a cooperative effort between the two counties. Besides the other commissioners from Butler County, the elected officials from the State Senate and the State Legislature were also there to make sure that the things that the public needed immediately were provided. So again, I was very pleased with the response from not only Emergency Management, also, but also all of the other agencies involved in Sedgwick County, and I'm sure that I missed some that were out there, and I apologize, but we had a great response. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, Chairman really hit on a lot of what I was wanting to say, but I think it really goes to show how important collaboration is in the good times, right? So when something like this happens, we're ready and we're prepared to come together, and I see a lot of the leadership that was a part of that. Kevin and Doug and Jim, you're all in here as well, so thank you guys and your teams for everything that you did to be a part of this because it really was a collective effort. And this report is, I was reading through it, I didn't quite read every word of every page because it was really long, but I did read a lot of it, and, I mean, just the amount of time and work that went into that is impressive, so I really appreciate everything that you guys are continuing to do with this storm. And we had started working on something called Listos before this happened. Unfortunately, we didn't have that up and going yet, but it's a program out of California that really hits on getting prevention and education to Spanish-speaking communities, and so we're really pushing that now, and I want to thank you and your team for doing that and really amping that up and getting that going as soon as possible. I've been seeing a lot of people really responding well to that, and they're really excited to be a part of it, so I want to thank you and your team for that. But this was, it was a horrible experience. We're still getting through it, but I appreciate all the work that you and all of our teams here in Butler County have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the comments of the previous commissioners. Overall, I just want to say, the response was impressive, and I think that one of the things people don't think about, county government, that we do, that we plan ahead, and again, it's not just tornadoes, but it's all kinds of things. We talked about that the other day when we adopted our plan. Very comprehensive, but we got to see things in action, and it's not very often we get a chance to see the planning actually take place, you know, actually enacted, so to speak. So I'll say thank you to all those involved, and I know Commissioner Meister and I did, just like Commissioner Dennis, we toured the area together, Commissioner Meister and I did, both Sedgwick County and in Butler County. Just doing some quick math, the damage cost between Sedgwick County and Butler County, as well as the number of homes destroyed or substantially damaged in Sedgwick County versus Butler County, either case, comes out to about 11% of this tornado impact was in Sedgwick County. And I think it was totally appropriate that we had set up our command center in Butler County, but I'll tell you, during the discussion that happened around the tornado, I almost never heard anything about Sedgwick County. It was always about Butler County. And I, at the end of the day, we had 11% of the people impacted by this in a very, very big way, changed their life forever. 11% of those impacted were in Sedgwick County. I don't want to forget that. I don't know, looking backwards now, if we actually, you know, if we received essentially a reasonable share of the attention in terms of the supports that were provided to the community. I don't know how we fared compared to Butler County. There was obviously a lot more dense population in Butler County, the neighborhoods that were impacted there, but I want to make sure that, you know, all folks did get, I guess, their, the attention that they needed, you know, that was, you know, they had a representation both from those that responded, they had what they needed as well. So I don't really know how to measure that, but...
I think I addressed that concern. So it was fortunate that we had 22 homes destroyed. That gave my team an actual opportunity to have eyes on and meet with every single one of our residents to make sure that they knew how and where to get resources. So the resources were available. We didn't treat it as two jurisdictions. They had access to everything that the Andover residents did. And then we also, so we're also, that's part of the reason why I'm on all of these committees, too, is to make sure that our 11% is not forgotten. And in fact, a lot of folks now are not calling it the Andover tornado, they're calling it the April 29 tornado, because I want to make sure that, and even some of the folks that were impacted in rural Butler County kind of somewhat feel a little bit left out as well. And it's not uncommon in disasters. Usually wherever ground zero is, that's where most of the attention goes as far as the media and the communications, but our residents definitely had a representation, and they still do, even through the long-term recovery, to make sure that everyone is still getting access to the same resources.
Do we have a list of basically what's left to be recovered? I mean, I know there's got to be quite a bit of work still to do, but a lot of this is falling on insurance, and I guess some self-funding as well, but do we have a list of what projects are still in work that need to be...
Our United Way partners are handling the case management. There's 192 cases that they are managing, and they're treating it, again, as all, when the committee gets the information to review the cases, we don't have the demographics, we just know the situation. Like this is a family of four, they lost everything, they need help with this. So we all collectively come together and review cases. So I know there's 192, they've been working hard. I don't know where the final number is yet, other than I do know there's still a lot of cases that still need assistance. Some of it is because of insurance delays. Some of it is they have the money, but they can't get their supplies because of some of the shortcomings of building materials and things. So United Way is, this is what they do. They're fantastic at case management, and so they are the ones that have all of that data and making sure that everyone's getting taken care of through the Long-Term Recovery Committee.
Good answer. I have just two quick questions. One of them is on this Long-Term Recovery Committee. I guess I'd like to know more about, you know, who's serving on that committee? How do they get appointed? When are they meeting? I guess I feel a little bit left out because I've not been part of that, unfortunately. Again, this tornado that impacted Sedgwick County was primarily in District 5 in my district, and I feel like this has been going on, but I've not been part of this discussion, unfortunately. So I'd like to know more about how that's formed and when they're meeting and what do they, what do they have left to do? I guess if there's minutes from those meetings, I'd like to get caught up, okay?
Sure.
And then finally, there was some discussion a little bit about tornado sirens and warnings. I know we talked a lot about this when the tornado actually happened, but has there been any type of review regarding our strategy in terms of the range of our sirens, updating our sirens, things like that? Because the folks in Andover, I think, had a much greater awareness that this was coming. They were, again, they're much closely, much more population density was a lot closer together, and the sirens, of course, did their job there for sure, but people on the leading edge of this tornado, out of the area in Sedgwick County where it first hit, there was a lot of discussion about they did not know what was coming. Again, based on the pictures and the discussion you've already presented today, it looks like we knew this was going to happen. Those radar images were very, you know, anybody who knows a little bit about weather, I don't know much about weather, but I guess they did predict this was, this was going to happen, and so I don't know how else to warn the folks that this was coming. They obviously had the big storm, but then right behind that was this tornado, and a lot of them were concerned, because they felt like the sirens, even though they may have been outdoors, they couldn't hear them.
So with that particular cell, that thunderstorm, we knew the elements were going to come together, but we didn't know this storm particularly. Normally, the storms that are going to produce tornadoes will have some sort of sign of rotation where we can give at least a 15, 20-minute warning through the National Weather Service. This storm was a garden variety thunderstorm. There was no rotation, no indication that this was going to produce a tornado, so that's part of the reason. this was going to produce a tornado. So that's part of the reason. We had gotten reports of funnel clouds about 8:08, 8:09, 8:09, and we were reporting that to the National Weather Service, and they weren't seeing it on the radar. They were funnel clouds. And like I showed on that radar, there was no precipitation, no rotation. Once we started getting those to the weather service, literally as they were typing, you know, getting the tornado warning material out, it had touched down. And that's when that showed up on the radar as a debris ball. All of a sudden, we're like, there it is, there's the tornado. But the storm, it wasn't part of that actual storm that we were keeping an eye on. So this one did catch us by surprise. To address the tornado sirens, we actually, before this tornado, had already been working on a capital improvement project to kind of re-strategize how we're managing our outdoor warning system. That's already in the works. But yes, that there has been analysis of our tornado and outdoor warning system. Even, you know, I don't, this particular storm, even the outdoor sirens, the warning was so timely. Like I said, that funnel clouds, within two or three minutes of funnel clouds, we had it on the ground already tearing stuff up. So it was very, very short notice versus what we're used to normally. Thunderstorms will give us an indication that they're going to rotate, we start issuing warnings. And I got to give kudos to the spotters and residents who were calling in those funnel clouds, because it wasn't showing up on radar. So I know the weather service was caught off guard, but they trusted the storm spotter teams. And as I said, they were issuing that tornado warning. It just couldn't get out fast enough for how quick that thing hit the ground.
So the time, from the time, from the time the tornado actually was recognized in our technology and all of that, when did the tornado sirens actually get sounded relevant to that point? Was it after the tornado was on the ground, or was it before? Do we know?
Um, I will have to check to see exactly if it was based on the funnels. The polygon that issued, I don't know where the tornado was at, because it did get reported as a tornado on the ground when the warning came out. So I'll have to kind of see where, we rely on that National Weather Service polygon to come out too. So there's a little bit of a delay in that to warn that specific area where the tornado is.
Okay. I think I still have some concerns and questions about tornado sirens, but we can talk about this off, out of the meeting here. But again, thank you for the great report today. Appreciate all you guys did to put this report together. It's been a tremendous, a reflection on what went right, what we can do better. So very well, good job. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Julie. I appreciate the nice lengthy report that you provided each one of the commissioners. Day in and day out, we don't hear much from your department. But I know that during that period of times we're not hearing much, you're preparing so that the next morning, you're ready to react. And that's what we appreciate. So when you get back, let all your folks know over in emergency management how much we appreciate them, because we couldn't have done what we did the next day immediately after a tornado without the preparedness that you all went through. And having an action after action report like this makes sure that the next time, and there will be a next time, that we're ready and that we can react as quickly as possible. So thank you very much.
And I would be remiss not to mention that we do have a risk of severe storms, and they have used the tornado word by this weekend, Thursday and Friday. So just stay tuned to weather. It's our second severe season here, and we just got weather service situational awareness packets to send out. So we have a trend today. Photo opportunity? No? Okay. No, I really do appreciate your support. We're here to do anything we can to help the community prepare and respond to these type of things that we wish never happened.
Julie, thank you. I'll move to receiving file. Motion and a second, any discussion? Say none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, island annexation request by the City of Goddard pursuant to City of Goddard Resolution Number 22-23.
Morning, Kirk.
Morning, Commissioners. Kirk, Sponsor Assistant County Counselor. Here before you today is an island annexation request by the City of Goddard. The Guard City Council approved Resolution 22-23 to island annex the property, which they then submitted to the county for consideration. Under state law, we have 30 days after receipt of the city's resolution to make findings, which I will discuss later on in this presentation. An island annexation occurs when the property proposed to be annexed does not adjoin the contiguous boundary of the city. And I'm just going to start out by bringing up some of the maps of the property in question. So this is kind of the general overview that shows the property in question in the yellow and its relationship to cities in the area. Next slide is a closer view. The blue is Goddard, as indicated. And just in this situation, the property owner has specifically petitioned for annexation. In your backup materials, you will provide the consent to an agreement for annexation that was executed between the property owner and the City of Goddard. If the annexation is approved, the City of Goddard plans to extend water and sewer services to the location. The Guard Police Department would take over the law enforcement services to the area. Additionally, the City of Goddard currently contracts with Sedgwick County Fire District Number One for the provision of fire services within the city limits. Thus, the fire services would remain unaffected in this situation. Public Works also indicated that the two neighboring roads are county-maintained, so the impact on the Atka Township would be minimal. As you can see by the picture indicated, this area is the essentially northwest corner of the Pawnee and 167th. Safeguard indicated that they're understanding that the property owner plans to develop duplex residential facilities. The Metropolitan Area Planning Department reviewed the proposed annexation, and it is their opinion that the proposed annexation would not hinder or prevent the proper growth or development of the area, or that of any incorporated city within Sedgwick County. The proposed island annexation is consistent with the 2035 urban growth area designation for the City of Goddard, as depicted in the community investments plan from 2015 through 2035. Additionally, the official 2015 City of Goddard comprehensive plan includes a 2025 future land use map, which indicates the property as appropriate for future residential use. No other city in Sedgwick County has identified the property as part of its future urban growth area. State statute lays out requirements in which an island annexation can take place. The first being that the land is located within the same county as the city. The second requirement is that the landowner petitions for or consents in writing to the annexation. And then the third requirement is that the Board of County Commissioners of the county, by a two-thirds vote of the members thereof, find and make a determination that the annexation of the land will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area, or that of any other incorporated city within the county. That is the recommended action before you today. It's also the resolution that's in front of you. However, it is ultimately the will of the Board to make any finding as you see fit. With that, I stand for questions. I'd also like to indicate that Micah Scogan from the City of Goddard is here and available for questions as well.
Very good. Thank you. I know you went around and briefed each and every commissioner on this, and so we're very familiar with this annexation. The only question I had at the time was why they weren't doing the land just to the north of that. So it wasn't an island annexation, but you were able to answer that question. It looks like it is in the future plan to annex the property to the north of that. So I don't have any issues. It is in my district. I move that we find that the proposed annexation will not hinder or prevent the proper growth and development of the area, or that of other incorporated city located in Sedgwick County, and therefore approve the resolution. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Say none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you all. Thanks for being here. Did you have anything you wanted to say? I'm sorry.
I just appreciate the motion.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I.
I'm sorry.
Take a break. That's okay.
Yeah. Why don't we take, let's see, it's 10:36. Let's take five minutes. Five minutes, okay. So 10:41, while we'll be back. And we've got a nice digital clock. Thank you. Let me know when we're ready to go. Okay, we're back live again. I want to welcome everyone back, and we'll call the meeting back to order. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, approve a 2022 budget transfer from the General Fund Operating Reserve to the Election Commissioner Budget.
Morning, Lindsey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Pover, so you're CFO. So I am here before you this morning to request a budget transfer on behalf of the Election Office. Typically, you will see department heads come up and make these requests, but in this case, Angela obviously has a bit going on. So I am here to present the information to you. So it is a sizable transfer. We are requesting $605,000 be transferred from contingency to the elections budget. And the primary uses for that overwhelmingly are personnel. So in your backup for this particular item, we outline the dates and of significance that really caused the August 2 primary election with the special election to look more like a general election in terms of cost and support. And so what we see is that because of that, and because of law changes, the Federal Fair Labor Standards Act changes back in 2020, that caused us to change multiple positions from salary to hourly, our overtime costs have just skyrocketed. And so what we will be asking for today is a transfer of $530,000 to personnel, with the balance to be transferred to contractuals and commodities in order to pay for polling site locations, moving costs, transportation costs, and those types of things. So in addition to the election looking more like a general, in addition to these Fair Labor Standard Act changes, we also are seeing the result of costs that we were able to use, if you recall, grant funding in 2020 to purchase additional machines. And now those maintenance costs have come online. So that is another factor that was not included. And of course, inflation with the cost of paper, envelopes, and all of those things have gone up. And we likely will see, I would anticipate, even more increases for future elections because of the new watermark standard that will be required to be printed on every ballot. So this is just to address 2022 and get us through the end of this year. We already are in a position where the Elections Office has had personnel exceeds. Thankfully, the budget allows, or the system allows, those costs to be posted, whether there's budget there or not, so that no one's being deprived of being paid. But we do need to get the budget authority there. The good news is that anything that is not spent from personnel at the end of the year does expire, just like the rest of the budget. And so if it is not spent, then that just reflects as savings to the overall budget. And this cost is included in the forecast that you'll hear from Brent here shortly in your quarterly update. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions if I can. Otherwise, I recommend you approve the budget transfer.
Hey, thank you, Lindsey. A couple of quick questions. So with the addition of $605,000, what's that make the total 2022 budget for Election Office?
That is a great question. It will be roughly 2.8.
2.8 million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There are several counties that all have appointed election commissioners. How does that, by population, actually not by population, by registered voters, how do we compare by registered voters, and you can't answer that today, I'm certain.
I cannot.
So, but with the largest counties that have an election commissioner that's appointed, by the number of registered voters, how do we come out with the other counties? So that's a future question, but I just want to know how we stack up with the rest of them.
That will be something that is fairly easy for me to get to you. So we'll make that happen.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also don't think you'll be able to answer the next question, but what is the expected turnout in terms of percentage turnout for this election compared to 2018?
I do not know.
Okay. I'm just, I'll just say on mail ballots, it's, you know, statewide, statewide, we're seeing a slowdown from what we saw in 2018. Not comparing, if I don't look at Sedgwick County specifically, but look at the rest of the state, mail balloting's about 18 to 20% lower than 2018 election. So I don't know if that translates to anything else, but it is interesting that apparently there is a little bit less interest in this election, at least if you look at it as a mail ballot response. But historically, I just want to say, I think that Sedgwick County is more efficient than, let's say, Johnson County, for example. I think they spend a lot more money than we do. And I would be glad to advocate for whatever funding is necessary to fund the office, but I'd like to make But I'd like to make a couple of points here. They have a lot more polling sites than we do. We made a change, I think, if I understand correctly, back in 2004, we had 206 poll sites, and in 2006, they lowered to 60 poll sites. And the way, in fact, I don't think in 2006, we actually did the advanced mail ballot application, but we did that in 2008 as a way to encourage mail balloting over poll site voting. And so that was a change that was made back in the day, and I don't know that was the right policy for Sedgwick County. I've continued to advocate for more poll sites. I've done this every year I've been here. I think, again, more poll sites is preferable. I also like to just comment that I'm still very disappointed in Senate Bill 130 has not been implemented by the state of Kansas. That was passed in 2018. Is that right, Mr. Chairman? 2018? That was at least four years ago. So we're looking at really a denial by the state of Kansas to actually allow that law to go forward, and that would do a lot to mitigate lines in Sedgwick County. So I want to just really stress the fact that we actually have a solution. We advocated for, we helped write the law, we testified in favor of it. It was signed by the governor, and it is a Kansas law, and yet we're not able to do what that law says because the Secretary of State has not given us rules that actually makes that law workable in Sedgwick County. And just to reiterate my testimony, I provided at that time, was that every one of our poll sites could be a vote center. I'm not suggesting a mega vote center like Interes Bank Arena. I'm suggesting that of our 86 poll sites we have in place today, that every one of them could do on Election Day what we do on early voting in person. We have 16 sites that are open today, opened yesterday, are open until the end of the week, and of those 16 sites, you can be anywhere in Sedgwick County, your residents can be anywhere in Sedgwick County, and you can vote at any one of those poll sites on the correct ballot. This machinery is designed to do this, and there's no reason why we can't implement a policy that would allow us to do that on Election Day, other than the fact that state law has trailed the technology that we have in place here. So I'm disappointed that the state has not done that. I know there's going to be a lot of discussion about long lines. Let me reiterate, Senate Bill 130 is part of the solution, more poll sites is part of the solution. And this commission did approve a postcard 14 days ago, I believe.
That sounds right, yes.
14 days ago, two weeks ago, we approved a postcard that did not get sent out. I think most people received that postcard last Friday. So that postcard, if you will, encourages voters to know different ways to vote, both by mail, and unfortunately, it's a little bit late for a mail ballot. If you get the card on Friday, you don't have much time to actually apply for a mail ballot. Also talks about the early vote centers, and talks about you can see your ballot online. If you want to go online, you can look and see your ballot. So that postcard was a way to inform the voters of, educate voters on their opportunities to vote, different ways to vote. So I want to just reiterate, I don't think this is about not funding the election office. I'm very much in favor of the $605,000 transfer today. I think that's very needed. But please correct me if I'm wrong, but most of this money's already been spent.
It is in the process of being spent. I would tell you by the election, yes, the vast majority of this has already been spent a week from.
But you're talking about a very large amount of overtime's already been paid.
Yes, that part has already been incurred, but we know that this will be eaten up in the next week.
Okay. Well, I think, again, one of the core functions of Sedgwick County, its constitutional responsibility is to fund the election, so we're going to do that, whatever it takes to do it. I do want to say that I think we ought to have the right to ask questions about efficiency and effectiveness of the election. As canvassers, I think we have some responsibility on this election to make sure that this is working as it needs to in the community. And so again, I feel like I have a right to ask some questions and understand what we're doing here, but my position is I'll support the $605,000, but I really want to see us have more poll sites. I think that's, again, a year after year after year, I've asked for this over and over and over again, more poll sites are needed in Sedgwick County. And I don't know if that necessarily means more equipment necessarily. I think ballot tabulators for sure, we need more of those. But the ballot marking machines and the poll pads that check people in, you could divide that out differently potentially. Right now, we have 86 poll sites. You could divide that out differently to 100 poll sites or 122 poll sites, for example, and it doesn't necessarily require more equipment. It does make it that more people, people would have more places to vote, potentially. And what Senate Bill 130 does, says if your poll site that you're assigned to has long lines, you can go to any poll site, and you could go to a different poll site and maybe not have a line over there. So again, it's not implemented today, so unfortunately, it's a state law implementation problem, but we did get that solution in place. And so when people see long lines today, I hope the frustration is focused on the Secretary of State and the state of Kansas. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate your comments on Senate Bill 130. That's something that this commission worked very hard to get passed. We worked with our legislators. The governor came to this very room and signed that bill that's hanging on the wall back there. Also, a number of the legislators that helped push that through were in this room to help recognize Senate Bill 130, and I'm kind of disappointed that it has not been implemented at this point. One of the main things that we have to make sure that we're cognizant of is if we ever do get it, so that we can move through and have people be able to vote at any poll site, is we're probably going to have to do a little bit of analysis to see which poll sites might have more people at it than other poll sites as a result of Senate Bill 130. I'm not sure how the population would shift from their current precinct to other locations. For example, maybe around Spirit, where a lot of people working during the day might want to be able to go over to a poll site near Spirit. So that's some decisions that we'll have to make in the future if we ever get it to be able to be implemented. Anyway, I don't see any other questions whatsoever. I move that we authorize the transfer budget authority from the reserved elections operating budget.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds.
We're excited today.
It's an exciting day. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
All right, Brent, you're on. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item J, presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Now you're on.
Good morning, Chairman Dennis, members of the county commission. For the record, Brent Shelton, your deputy CFO. Each quarter, as you know, the Division of Finance presents a quarterly financial report. This highlights the fiscal activities of the county for the year-to-date, and we compare that against the prior year. The data is compiled by folks in our budget and accounting office. They prepare the report, they help prepare this presentation. As always, I want to remind you that the information in the report is based on unaudited financial statements. There's a chance that things will be amended or modified as we go through the audit process. The document's been delivered to you. It'll be set on the county's website at the conclusion of this presentation. And again, thanks to the folks in accounting and budget for their efforts in preparing this report. As we typically do when we begin looking at year-to-date activity, we make a projection about where the fund balances are going to be across the six operating funds throughout the county. And what we're projecting at this point is that we will see a net decline across these six funds of about $627,000. The two areas where we're seeing reductions in fund balance at the end of the year, one is in the general fund, and this is a planned reduction in fund balance, primarily a result of additional personnel expenditures this year. As you recall, this is the year that we post one additional pay period over the other year, so that'll contribute to that reduction, that planned reduction in fund balance. In our enterprise and internal service funds, we're projecting about a $4.4 million increase at the end of the year. The main contributor to this are some expenses that are being incurred right now in risk management to pay for some building repairs that are covered under insurance, but the repairs are not completed at this time, and we're anticipating insurance proceeds will replace some of those funds, but it's not going to happen before the end of the year. Bond and interest fund, we anticipate an increase in our fund balance of about $900,000 as a result of no new additional interest charges this year. In our other property tax-supported funds, we've seen an increase in property tax revenues, and personnel expenses have been reduced in some of those areas, so we'll see an increase in that fund balance. The non-property tax-supported funds are those areas where the federal stimulus dollars have been deposited as we've gone through our COVID response activities. We're going to anticipate an increase there as those monies have been received, spent down over time. And then the FIRE district general fund revenues should outpace expenditures by about $130,000 this year. So overall, about a $600,000 reduction in fund balance year over year. See if I can work the mouse this morning. In the county property tax-supported funds, of which there are five funds in the county that are specifically supported with a property tax levy, we're anticipating, year-to-date, we've seen a $6.4 million increase in revenues in those funds. About $5.6 million of that comes from the increase in our tax base and increase in the property tax levies. Expenditures in those funds, we are seeing, over time, we've seen a decrease this year of about $10.8 million at the same time last year. That's primarily a result of some of the one-time COVID-related expenditures that were more prevalent in 2021 than they've been in 2022. We eliminate those COVID expenditures from the report, what we see is about a $1.8 million increase in the other expenditures in those funds, which is a little less than a 1% increase year over year. Let's take a little deeper dive and look at some of the line items in these areas. As we mentioned before, ad valorem taxes are up about $5.6 million. That's a 3.8% increase year over year. And sales and use taxes for the first nine months of the year not only were up in aggregate 15.7%, but every month, we saw an increase from what we saw the year prior month. Motor vehicle taxes, there's been some impact to the supply chain, and we've seen fewer new vehicle registrations, so that's having an impact downward on our motor vehicle tax revenues, but construction activity is up. And the next line, you see about a million dollar increase in our licenses and permits that are issued. What we're seeing is not only more projects, but a higher dollar amount of projects. EMS has been collecting more funds, and those are demonstrated, as we can see, in our insurance fees line item, Medicare fees, and Medicaid fees, that all of those areas are up in terms of an increased call volume with EMS. And the other item that I would point to on this page, as we've mentioned before, after a really robust real estate market, low interest rates last year spurring a lot of mortgage refinancing, our officers' fees, which are those per-page filing fees in the registered deeds offices, are off by about $1 million this year, year-to-date. So we're seeing the impacts of those rising interest rates. Personnel expenditures are the biggest expense in these funds, and although they've been relatively flat with a slight decrease year over year, what I think this chart shows, if we look at it holistically, is a couple of things. One, the impact of the number of vacancies that the county has across the organization, so we have fewer employees, but we've made wage enhancements. So salaries and wages, overtime costs, we see increases year over year, and at the same time, the employer portion of insurance premiums, pension contributions, and Social Security, FICA taxes have declined. Looking at the non-personnel expenditures across these five funds, three things that I would highlight on this slide. One is that, if you recall, the grant awards are down this year from the prior year because the third and final payment of the $6 million award to the zoo was made in 2021. No such payment was made in '22. That's the contributor to that decrease in the grant awards that we have paid out. Software and hardware maintenance, after reducing a lot of the technology review board projects in 2021 as a response to COVID, and as we prepared that budget, more of those have gone online. That $4.03 million encumbrance recognizes the shopping cart that's been put in place for those technology upgrades, and then we've significantly reduced the number of temporary employees in these funds by about $8.5 million or 93% from the prior year. Shifting now to the FIRE district, what we see is relatively flat revenue lines year over year. The tax base grew for the FIRE district at the same time the mill levy was reduced slightly, and one of the things that we've seen is less prior-year or delinquent taxes being collected year over year. Kind of a significant effort to collect some of those last year. We're not seeing as much of that activity this year. Expenditures in the FIRE district, pretty steady increases by about $100,000 a year over the last couple of years. Some more detail on those, we see here kind of a microcosm of the county, higher property tax collections, less motor vehicle tax revenue, and you see, again, the increase in salaries and wages, the increase in overtime, and then pension contributions are down. So I think it kind of paints a similar picture to what we've seen across the county. Now, the county operates a number of non-property tax-supported funds. These are not, these do not have a dedicated mill levy, and this first graph kind of indicates in 2018, 2019, pre-COVID, 2020, we received the CARES funds, so that spiked revenues in that year, and then two tranches of ARPA funds in 2021 and 2022. Without the COVID funds, the federal stimulus dollars in these funds, we stay between about $50 and $55 million year over year in terms of revenue. Looking at expenditures in these funds, again, you see that pre-COVID in 2018 and 2019, expenditures of CARES dollars in 2020, CARES and ARPA dollars in 2021, and then continuing to spend the ARPA dollars. So we're not spending quite as rapidly as we did last year in those funds. And here, if we strip the COVID expenditures out, you see that pretty steady, pretty even lines year over year. Some detail in these funds that I would point out, first of all, a couple of new things on this chart that we haven't seen in the past. As a result of going to the CCBHC payment model for COMCARE, we've created a separate general ledger account to capture their prospective payment system of PPS1 Medicaid fees. So the third line down, you see a new line item, their new GL account, representing the capturing of those Medicaid fees according to that new payment model. Drop a couple more lines down, and you see a reduction in Medicaid fees. This is where all those revenues were shown in the past, so now we've split it out to track the difference. The other thing that I would point out is about the lower one-third. You've got federal revenue miscellaneous. I think three months ago, we mentioned that COMCARE had received a substance abuse and mental health services grant, but because of staffing challenges, weren't able to spend those dollars and had some money left over, they've been allowed to extend that grant, and these represent payments to reimburse them for expenditures that they've made for that, in that grant. Key expenditures in these funds. Key expenditures in these funds, the things that I would highlight here are that the financial professional services, about the fourth line down, that represents expenditures for consultants that we have used in finance and across the organization to help us make sure that we're spending federal stimulus dollars, that they are COVID-eligible expenditures, that we're in compliance with the federal regulations, helping with reporting and those types of activities. The management services line just below that picks up the expenditures in COMCARE from their new payment system, or payment model, where they're now reimbursing their affiliate providers for the services that they're providing. And then the grant awards decreased. That is pretty much COVID-related, one-time grants that were provided as we went through 2021, and that activity's reduced a lot year to date. This next slide shows that we're now in that third quarter of 2022, so we've experienced that drawdown of funds, tax funds that were received in the first two quarters of the year. And then just to demonstrate that we consistently comply with county policy that says that we will maintain 20%, unrestricted, that the unrestricted general fund balance will be at least 20% of our budgeted experience, expenditures, we've stayed above that line and complied with policy. Looking at our investment portfolio, and typically fixed income investments are a little bit boring, but they're not so much so these days. We have a current portfolio of $362 million. That's down $72 million from the second quarter. We saw that on the previous couple of slides as we spent down revenues. That is, however, $18 million higher than last year at this same period of time. I'm happy to report that our yield has tripled from the last time I spoke to you. We were at 0.43% on our portfolio. We're up to 1.417. We still have a number of long-term investments that are yielding very poorly. The 1.417 yield, though, is below the T-Bill index of 3.33%. Just for comparison, one year ago, it was 0.09%. So you can see our benchmark line is moving faster than we're moving to catch up with it. But as we renew our maturing investments, we're investing at those higher rates, hoping to, to catch that, that moving target. And the feds are going to meet today, and probably looking at a 75 basis point or three-quarter of a percent increase in the federal funds rate. So that benchmark is going to continue to climb, and we'll continue to chase that rate. Looking at some of the significant capital projects that have either seen a lot of activity or seen completion in the third quarter, we've got the Health Department's West Clinic remodel. As you know, that building was purchased, was out of date, and it's receiving an addition to the building, expanding the waiting room, reception, conference rooms, and storage areas, a better public image for the Health Department at that facility. Design process began in early July for that progress, for that project. I think we've mentioned before that Public Works has modified their construction schedule this year because of workforce challenges in the state of the, of the construction industry. So some projects that were let earlier in the year are going to be begun in the fourth quarter. But nonetheless, we are seeing some, couple of projects, or three projects that did complete in the third quarter of this year. One was the Sharice Woods Benefit District. That's a special assessment-funded project that we're going to, where they've added street and sewer, or street and drainage improvements to a subdivision on the southeast corner of 119th Street West and MacArthur. That project was let in July and finished in August of this year. A bridge replacement on Greenwood Road between 117th and 135th Street North. This bridge project consisted of the replacement of a 46-year-old bridge, that structure that had been suffering the effects, long-term salt intrusion, had to be posted for reduced load. A box structure was put in place, some paving, and that project was completed earlier this month. And then finally, the pavement preservation program, 15 miles of highway throughout the county received asphalt overlays. That began mid-July, or July 4th, and was completed the first part of this month. It came in just under budget. So if we put all the pieces together, what are the key points that I would, would have you take away from this presentation? One is that we're in good shape. We maintain healthy fund balances across the organization. We have continued to see revenue growth. Our tax base continues to grow. New construction is adding to that, as well as increases in assessed valuation. For the first nine months of the year, retail, sales, and use taxes increased. October, we saw the first decline year over year. So maybe inflation's having an impact. Maybe the rising interest rates are having an impact. And as we look forward, inflation is still that big thing out there that's going to impact us as we move forward. The costs of doing business continue to go up. Rising interest rates will help us with our investment portfolio. We've seen the other impact that they've had on the economic activity across the community. We, like every other organization in the community, the state, across the country, face workforce challenges. We're doing what we can to meet those. The hard insurance market is still there. We'll be back in about a month to speak to you about approving the premiums for our property insurance package going into 2023. One thing that may begin to mitigate some of that is the investment income that these insurers can receive. They too invest money in fixed income markets. We're keeping an eye on the federal stimulus dollars, looking for opportunities to leverage those, to do things for the county and for the community. And we're still sitting here trying to figure out, are we in or are we going into a recession? We've got full employment and inflation, which kind of counter to a recession, but every, the indicators are that we may be headed that way. So with those things, I would stand for any questions. And the conclusion of that would recommend that you receive or file a report.
Thank you. Any questions from Brent? Seeing none, move to receive and file. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Brent. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item K, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on October 27, 2022.
Good morning.
Good morning. Chairman Commissioners, Lee Barrier, Purchasing Department, the regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of October 27, 2022 resulted in three items that we are asking for you to approve. Item one, Cronus Telestaff Maintenance and Support, various departments. The recommendation is to accept the quote from UKG Cronus Incorporated in the amount of $67,134.91. Item number two is the Courthouse Upper Floors Remodel Project Services. This project is being funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, and we recommend to accept a bid from Harmon Huffman Construction Group Incorporated in the negotiated amount of Please note that the approval of this item will be contingent on funding approval to be considered on today's consent agenda. And item number three, Waters Technology Purchase of LCMS MS Regional Forensic Science Center, and the recommendation is to accept the quote from Rogers Waters Technologies Corporation, DBA Waters Corporation, in the amount of $291,498.50. I will be happy to try and answer any questions and recommend approval of these items.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I don't see any questions. All the Commissioners defend an opportunity to review the minutes of the Board's bids and contracts. I move that we approve the recommendations of the Board and bids and contracts. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Good morning. Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stolz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items L through double letter AE this morning.
Move to approve Lima through Alpha Echo. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. This time, I'd like to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting for November 2nd and call the order of the governing body of Fire District Number One for November 2nd. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Manager Stoltz.
Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stolz, again, recommend approval of consent item A, item on the fire agenda.
Move to approve consent item Alpha. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And I thought we had the chief in the back of the room.
He was here.
Is he gone?
I was going to step out, but I can answer questions.
Okay. Well, during other, I was going to ask what our fire was, so. Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
Hey, we received an email from Tanya last night, where we don't have any legislative issues to discuss today. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Okay. Are you going to speak on what's going on with the fire?
Okay.
Thank you.
Kevin Nelson, Deputy Chief Administration for Fire District One. So currently, right now, we're still operating on the scene. It's not an issue where we feel like we can attack it, extinguish it, and put it out and be done with it. So it's an operation where we're essentially just managing the fire, managing the embers. We're going to have a lot of winds coming up. We had a really windy day yesterday. We watched it all night last night. So it'll be the same thing today and until we have the opportunity to either completely extinguish it, or it gets to the point where it's a small enough fire that they can manage it themselves. So we've got some neighborhoods that are fairly close, so we're driving through those neighborhoods on a regular basis, making sure that we're protecting property as much as possible.
Okay. How many apparatus do we have out there at the fire right now?
I think we have about eight out there right now. It's down from the previous days, but I think we're about eight.
And Fire District Number One's the only one on site now?
Today, that's true, Wichita Fire has helped us in previous days.
Okay. Are we having to pay overtime to have that much apparatus out there?
So far, we, we have not had to incur any overtime, but we've been having to take trucks out of other stations to, to man those, which could potentially cause us some problems in other areas, but we've been fortunate so far.
Okay. So you know what stations that don't have fire apparatus in them right now?
We don't have any stations that don't have apparatus. What we would have is some stations that would normally have two or down to one. So we don't have any empty fire stations.
Okay. And have we any idea yet on what caused the fire?
I believe it's still under investigation, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll be interested in the outcome of that. Very good. Any questions, Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Okay. That's in your district, so I just wanted to make sure.
I just want to say thank you for, for all the work that you guys are doing. I've, I've been watching from afar, paying attention, and so I just appreciate you guys being swift and being able to be out there to support not only the residents, and so that's really all my comments.
There you go. Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. So I wanted to say, I, I had the chance to go out there and talk to some of the firefighters. The chief took me around and showed me some of the, some of the areas that they're fighting the fire, and it was just unbelievable what you guys are dealing with out there. The equipment we have is, is amazing, and a lot of the guys out there are standing by waiting for things to do, but the, the equipment is pumping the water, and they're hitting that fire as hard as they possibly can. I think after the end of the first day, it was about a million gallons of water between all of the different units had used, about that. I'm not sure what the total is today, but I'm sure it's got to be a lot higher than that. So any, you guys have an update on how much water's been used at this point?
Uh, no, sorry, I do not.
It's a lot.
A lot.
So I guess chinny's going down by the inch, I suppose. But anyway, I want to say thank you to the firefighters, and thank you to the chief, and, and it's impressive to see Central County Fire District Number One in action. It's really amazing. I've seen them, I've seen them squirt water from the aerials before, but never actually yet flames. And so this was the first time I've actually got to see them do that. And the, everyone out there's doing a tremendous job. It's very coordinated, and they're doing a, their stamina is incredible. I'm praying for their protection, and I just pray this fire goes out soon, and I like that some rain would make things a little bit better, so I pray for that as well. But thank you for all you can do, and please extend my appreciation to your staff and the firefighters, please.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and tell your staff to be safe. We appreciate what they're doing out there. One question on the amount of water. Last time I heard, it was well over a million gallons, so it's probably a lot higher than that now. Now, Park City buys that from Wichita, right?
Uh, no, I believe Park City has their own water.
They've got their own wells. Okay. Very good. So who's paying for all that water that we're pumping?
Uh, I don't know.
Park, Park City pays for all that. I hope they have it in their budget, because they're pumping a lot of water.
Yes, sir.
Very good. I don't have any other questions on that. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
We do not have a requirement for an executive session for that, so with that, oops, I'm sorry. Commissioner Howell.
Chairman, I just wanted to ask a question about the steering council resolution. If the Commissioners still have questions regarding the makeup of the members, if they've got their questions answered at this point. I've asked our, our counselor to make a draft update based on conversation at our last meeting, but I know there's some concern about whether we needed to have two appointments from the aviation companies or one, and I don't know how we resolve that necessarily, but I would like to just make sure that, it's my intent to bring this back for adoption, hopefully on the, I should say, we have a SCAC meeting coming up. Do you want to remember the date, Justin? Chief Williams plans to be there as well.
It's my understanding, that's, I believe, is it November 12th?
November 12th, yeah. So again, I'd like to see if we have a, a clean copy, go to SCAC for their consideration and hopefully a recommendation for adoption, and then November the 16th is something that they do that I'd like to bring it back to this bench and, and make a, hopefully, a recommendation to adopt it by this committee, by our, by our committee or commission. So anyway, if, if you have any changes, I'd like to make sure that we get those concerns to Justin, so that we can have a clean copy to go before the SCAC meeting on the 12th.
Good. I know I got a voicemail from the Mayor of Vandale, and he had some questions. I've tried to call him twice, and I, I keep getting voicemail back, so I don't know what his questions are at this time.
Okay. Anyway, if there's, if there's lingering questions and concerns, I would encourage the Commissioners to work with our counselor, and certainly, if you want to talk to me about it, I would love to have that conversation. I've not heard from anybody one-on-one, so I don't know what concerns might be out there. But as of right now, I believe we have a plan to see that drafted, as we discussed at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and present that to SCAC and then bring it back for adoption. So any, any other concerns out there, out there, I'd like to hear about before we get to those meetings going forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else need to come for the governing body of Fire District Number One? Seeing nothing, we adjourn the Board of, the governing body of Fire District Number One, call back to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
We received an email from Tanya last night. She is working about four major issues on that right now, and we'll get an update at our next meeting. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Any Commissioners have anything for committee reports today? Seeing nothing, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Any Commissioners have anything to cover during other? Seeing nothing, oops, I'm sorry. Commissioner Meitzner.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I just want to, it's a humbling feeling to sit here knowing that we've had years and years of Commissioners sitting in these very seats, and this is the last meeting. And hopefully, the, the positive DNA that's been on these desks has transferred to, to us, and it just... And it just, I want to thank all the previous commissioners for years and years that have sat here in the past and tried to make our county a better place and create value for individual citizens and groups. And so it's just, it's humbling to sit here and know that this is the last time that we're going to be here. So I just wanted to extend my thanks to the previous commissioners that have all sat here. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Chairman. I wasn't going to say anything, but I agree with Commissioner Meitzner. This is a pretty sobering moment. And reflecting back all the years I've been in this place, it's just amazing the work that's been done for Sedgwick County, but for really decades before even my time here. But I want to point out, there's a frog over my head. It's been there all the years I've been here. Every time I come to these meetings, I look at that frog. So we need to move that frog over to the new place because it's got a history here. I don't know when that frog went up there, but it's been there all the years I've been here. So please move the frog. Thank you so much.
It'd be a souvenir for you. We'll get it. Very good. Well, commissioners, we're going to remain and get a photo op of the last time that we have a meeting. Next time, we look forward to a meeting over in the Ruffin Building. And I, first of all, I want to thank our staff for all the work that they've done to get the move. We now have everybody but HR over there that I know of that are going that direction. Hopefully, we can get HR over there before the end of the year, and we're working on that very hard. We're going to talk a little bit later today about security over there. There's been a couple incidents that we need to discuss. So I appreciate all the history that went into this room and look forward to starting new history in the new room, but only for a short period of time. I'm hoping at some point, we pass some kind of an idea of where we're going for the future. So Commissioner Meitzner?
Yeah, thank you, Anna. Failed one thing. It's only appropriate, the number one citizen of the city and the county, Lonnie, the plumber has joined us on this very last, very last meeting in this room, so.
14 years.
So your DNA is in this room as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Did you come just for this meeting, knowing it was the last one?
Yes. I've been concerned about long COVID, but I wanted the last meeting and our first meeting in the new building.
Nice. Well, I just wanted to point out briefly that, you know, the reason why we are moving was because we were successful in getting the implementation of new specialty courts. And so us vacating this building really allows our specialty courts to have an expansion that will help people have a court, go through a court system that is designed to help them stay out of the criminal justice system. And so I think that that's really important to point out, the reason why we're vacating. And I just wanted to make sure that we reiterated that fact. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anything else come before other? Seeing nothing, we do not have a requirement for an executive session today. With that, we'll adjourn, and we'll have our sixth photo op of the day.
Let's do a seated one, and then we'll stand up.